And and also what I want to do, Sung and Rada, is I want to have you guys connect with Bob to make sure that he gets into context and also gives you feedback on what he needs to feel comfortable with some of the decision-making processes. And open the channel for discussion. We tried to do that last time and it didn't quite ever happen. This time I want to make sure that he gets oriented with you. And then I've also made sure that if he has any questions, he always can check in with me. Uh, and then if you want the right answer, you can call Randy. All right. All right. With that, then we'll we'll open up an item number two. Item number two is for public comments not on the agenda. What we do with this is we open up the public comments for things. We either hear feedback on things or hear a new issue that comes up, or just get told something that we might not know, or someone that wants to tell us something. So with that, we'll open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak on something other than what's on the agenda. And the crowds are rushing to their to the microphone. No one online. I don't see anybody online that's ready to speak. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and bring up the approval for minutes of January nineteenth and the twenty-fifth. And we can do them either together or does everybody here? Let's see, you were on the you were you were always available on the nineteenth and the twenty-fifth, right?
I think so.
Yes, and and Perry was.
I was twenty-five.
All right, good. So I'll do that. We'll do them separate then. All right. So I need a motion for either an update or or acceptance of January nineteenth.
I move to accept.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Oh, we can actually, we're here in person. We don't have to do roll call. Uh, can we can we do all the all favors? Say aye for the first time in three years? Okay, let's go. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Staying abstaining.
Abstaining, two abstentions. All right. All right. Usually we have to read off the names and everything else. All right, uh, January twenty-fifth, the minutes on the January twenty-fifth. Uh, I didn't seem to need to update on that. Uh, all right, moved.
Second.
All right. Uh, Nancy seconds. That was simultaneous, but I'll give it to Nancy. Uh, uh, let's go ahead with the all in favor, say aye.
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 Staying.
Abstaining, one abstentions, four yeses, and one abstention. All right, very good. Thank you. With that, then we'll go ahead to the public hearing section of the of the agenda. Let me tell you how this works so that everybody's on the same page. If anyone comes in or logs on after we start, I may say this again. But the objective here is to make sure that everybody understands how the procedure works. We start off with an overview from staff who runs through the whole discussion of the item. And then we have questions or clarifications from the from the commission. And then we open up our public com- comment, and we start with the applicant or the representative. And then we close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for discussion and actions appropriate. And we'll do that on every item. And if anybody comes in, I'll make sure they're on the same page. So with that, we'll start with a continued item. Uh, item four eight is side setback variance on forty-two San Benito. And Rada, are you doing this one?
Yes, I'll be sharing screen, uh, so we all can take a look at what we're discussing for forty-two San Benito.
And Rada's a senior planner, but as I mentioned earlier, she tested positive, so she's making sure they're all safe. Uh, but she's showing up for the for the meeting anyway. Uh, and I told her she didn't need to, but she was determined to. So, uh, Rada, thank you. And, uh, uh, let's go ahead and with the overview.
Uh, thank you, Charlie. Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, the first item that we have, uh, in front of us is forty-two San Benito. The request from the applicant is for a variance for a detached accessory structure as in a carport. Uh, the requirement for Atherton Municipal Code, as you can see from this diagram, is that the accessory structure remains within the gray area of the rear yard and the side yards of the main building. The accessory structure, any accessory structure proposed in a development project in an R one A zone needs to be thirty feet behind the main building's front line or one-twenty feet from the front property line, whichever is less. The applicant is actually proposing the accessory structure at the line of the front set, uh, front of the main building itself. Um, a little bit more context as to what the site is. Um, the, um, the site is a pretty narrow lot. Uh, the required R one A lots in town are typically an acre. Uh, they have a they're they're required to have hundred and seventy-five feet is lot width and lot depth. However, this subject cited forty-two San Benito is just thirteen thousand one eighty-one square feet. The lot width is hundred feet, and then the lot depth is, uh, varying on both sides. So to the current situation of where this carport is located and the way, uh, the variance request is that the 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 variances for the front set setback requirement of this accessory structure itself. If they had produced a design that was conforming, it would look like this. What you see in this diagram in front of you, as you can see that it is, i- if it's on this side of the design, then the the dash line shown in yellow is where a conforming accessory structure would be located. However, they have they are showing it in front and it it's in line with the, uh, main setback, uh, main building area, uh, main building line itself. In in terms of the way the municipal code is written, Planning Commission needs to make four necessary findings for them to approve or disapprove the the variance in the of the of this, uh, carport. And staff has analyzed for the Planning Commission, uh, the findings that can be met, which include the size and the location of the trees, as you can see. Um, the size of the lot is very modest and compared to other other R one A lots in in the town. Uh, the location of the trees along the side that the accessory structure is actually proposed, uh, limit the, uh, limit the the site in its in its, uh, topography. And the finding number one can be met. However, um, the granting the variance, uh, of the finding number two may not be met because the granting the variance does not constitute, uh, special privileges inconsistent in- in- inconsistent with the limitations, um, upon properties in the vicinity vicinity in the zone. The applicant actually has stated that some of the neighborhood, uh, ne- some of the lots in the neighborhood, which have similar non-conforming depths, uh, he has observed that there are some accessory structures that are encroaching in the side setback area. And he does, uh, the applicant, uh, cites some examples when he submitted this variance to us. Um, and the lots that are identified in this, uh, table are some that we have observed that there are some side setback variations. Um, however, staff feels that this lot seems to have other areas in which a revised design may reduce or eliminate the possibility, uh, of, you know, this variance that is actually needed. Uh, it seems to us that this this specific fin- finding may not be met, and this is something we wanted to share with the Planning Commission. The third finding, uh, can be met because it doesn't, the location of this, uh, carport is not a habitable structure. It will not, uh, adversely in- impact any privacy concerns with the neighbors. And one of the attachments actually has some neighborhood, uh, support letters for this, uh, carport variance itself. However, uh, finding number four is where we were not able to find any any language relating to uh, carports in general in the general plan. The the, uh, I mean, Atherton in general doesn't, uh, I mean, it it it, the zoning code allows for carports, but it doesn't require carports. So finding number four may not be met. And so because the Planning Commission needs to make all the four findings, and we weren't able to make findings for four, um, we are recommending that, uh, the Planning Commission deny the variance, but it's up to your decision at the uh, after tonight's discussion. And this ends my presentation as a staff, uh, for forty-two San Benito carport variance.
All right, I have some questions. Any other any questions? So question I had, first of all, uh, if it were a garage, uh, would it be allowed to be, uh, uh, parallel to the footprint of the front of the property, uh, the other of the dwelling?
In front of the dwelling unit?
No, would it be would it be allowed to be in that same and they requested location if it were a garage rather than a carport?
Oh, the garage is also an accessory structure, and so no, it it would not be allowed to be.
But if it were if it were attached to the house, it it it, would it be allowed if it were attached?
If it were attached to the house, then it would need a side yard setback variance.
Okay, so it would be the same thing.
Yes, it was either or.
Okay.
Depending on.
All right. The other thing I, uh, I had the question I had was, um, I'm it's not it's not as much for this particular one, but it's one for future. Um, isn't ADU allowed to be on top of a carport? I know it's all I know it's required to be allowed on top of a of a garage, but is it allowed to is it required on top of a carport?
I'm not sure. Um, I do know that the town council has directed staff in terms of the housing element to allow for ADUs on top of a garage. That has not been implemented yet, but we are gonna work through that as part of the.
All right, that's something to put on your thinking cap, because if somebody comes forward with a with a, uh, uh, carport request, and then later comes back with an ADU request, I want to know in advance when I'm approving or talking through the, uh, carport request, if that is something that could be possible. Uh, or something to be considered in terms of privacy and everything else for the neighbors. All right, that's those are the only questions I had.
I actually had a question. So the my question is, is what's was staff's reason for denying this or requesting or suggesting a denial based on two of the four, uh, uh, required items? Had it been one, would you have said yes? Let's let's go ahead with it or no?
Uh, yes, I believe there was two of the different of the findings where we could not meet, and the planning commission would need to meet all four findings.
All right, thank you. Perry, did you have something?
Yeah. So for number four, granting the variance is consistent with the objectives of the general plan and the zoning code. Is that is that interpreted as as requiring that the subject of the variance be specifically required under the general plan? In other words, is there another way to slice number four?
For example, the the other incidents in the same neighborhood on the same block.
Well, I'm more thinking, uh, because I understand it, staff is, uh, proposing that number four can't be met because there's no requirement for carports. And I'm just saying, is there any other i- is that strictly required under number four? To find that something is consistent with the objectives of the general plan, does the subject matter of the variance have to be explicitly required in the general plan and the zoning code?
So because it's not specif- specifically, uh, called out, is there any reason for it to be specifically adhered to?
Uh, it looks like Andreas, the deputy city attorney, is.
I can speak to this one a little bit.
All right.
If if we were talking about an essential element of the house, if we were talking about some sort of habitable portion of the home and talking about the the side yard variance, that's a much more compelling argument on such a small site. Here we're talking about something that's more of a nice to have an accessory structure that they're looking to put into the the side yard into encroaching into the side yard setback. And so in looking at the overall goals and policies set forth in the general plan, here staff came to the conclusion that this finding can't be met because it would go against all of the the goals and policies of the town's general plan with respect to setback, with respect to trees, if they were to move the carport further back on the lot. That's that's why staff came to the conclusion that it did on on the element number four. So it's not strictly speaking necessary that something be required for this element. It's just that is another kind of factor that goes into this consideration. And to provide a little bit more context about variances in general, variances are are typically a very strict standard to or it's a very high bar to to make the findings for variance. They're really supposed to be the the tool in exceptional cases and circumstances. Because while there are some non-conforming structures in the area, the non-conforming structures aren't really the test. The test is the general plan, goals and policies.
Right.
And then everything that flows from that in the town. That's the rule set that the town council has set forth is how development in the town should go forward. And so while I'm sympathetic that there are other non-conforming structures in the area that might be similar to what's being applied for here, that's not really the test of what we're looking for.
Right, I understood that. Bob, you have something?
That's understatement that there are some non-conforming properties. The whole street's non-conforming, including, uh, including the portion that's in Atherton. And it it's obvious why it's non-conforming. These are tiny lots.
Right.
And you're trying to apply R one A zoning to these tiny lots, which I think is ludicrous, and I don't even understand why that why that is happening.
Right. So the question, so there's two levels of discussion that they pick up on that. One is, is the zoning wrong in the first place? And the second question I have to follow up to, if it if it were zoned differently for more more aligned with the with the size of those lots, what's the setback requirement on that?
I mean, I can only infer that if we applied the R one B lots, the front yard setback would be lower.
Right.
Um, but I think hold on, I mean, do we? Rada, do you remember if we, um, applied the there's a section of the code, if it was before nineteen forty-six, that there was a reduced front setback? Did we did we apply that? I can't remember.
If it's not recorded prior to nineteen forty-six, they get reduced development standards. But this, uh, the lot, I'm not sure what the date of the lot accreditation is, but because of the size, it is a substandard R one A lot. And uh, yes, Commissioner, uh, Polito is right that there are several like that in town.
All right. Well, let's let's hear from the applicant at this point, so we can go to the next step of this, and then that could add some clarity also. So let's go.
I have one other question, if I could, real quick.
All right, go ahead. One more.
Um, I I noticed Sally that you approved this. I presume it's because the driveway is existing, so they're making use of the existing driveway. And you ca- you did not see any obvious way to, uh, an alternative that would wouldn't damage some of the trees on the property.
Um, yeah, so I I mean, it's my preference is to not do a new driveway on the other side of the property. Um, my preference is also to not have a conforming structure near all of the shared trees that they share with the neighbor. Um, and also, I mean, I think there is an alternative location, but they would still need this variance. And so where they're putting it now is eight times away from the closest tree, which is has been approved, which is fine. Um, so that's why I was in favor of it.
All right.
I didn't see any issues with it.
Good follow-up question, Bob. Good call. All right, we'll go ahead. Go ahead and introduce yourself and let us know how to do it. You can leave that in. It's good. He'll pick you up if I'll.
It'll get me. All right.
Yeah.
I want to I want to be too soft. So thank you. My name is Chris Coomer. I'm an architect in Menlo Park. I've been practicing here since two thousand and one, and I live two blocks away from those properties in North Fair Oaks. So hopefully I know a little bit about the neighborhood, but
right.
And and I can hopefully answer some of the questions. I'm going to go a little old school.
Right.
And this just has some additional information.
When I started on planning commissions years ago, we actually got this size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
That's quite a facelift on the property that's there because I I'm prepared with that one, that property.
That property.
So thank you. So and I'd like to start also just by thanking Rada. I didn't, um, expect she would make the time for our project, especially with COVID and being at home. So
Yeah.
Rada, thank you for for doing this. I we've been at this since October. We started this discussion with previous staff. And if they recognize, I I don't think this was covered, but I just want to state it, the trees at the back left are the reason for the the application.
Right.
So there are trees at the back left, as Sally mentioned, and that's the right spot for the carport. But we could design it there and come to you for that variance, or we can design it here and come to you for this variance or that tree exception versus variance. So that gave birth, those discussions with uh, previous planning staff gave birth to this. They were saying, we have seen some of these go through. And the discussion was a little bit about the neighborhood. This neighborhood. So I'd like to amplify a couple of things, or and maybe I'll start with one thing. If this were zoned R one B, we'd have a twenty-foot front setback for these things. And that's actually in my letter.
Right.
And so this portion of town is zoned R one A. It is your lots, I imagine, are all acre lots, or most of the lots in town are. The buildable area on this lot is twenty percent the buildable area of the standard R one A lot. So it's handicapped to start with. And then the trees, in addition to that, make it challenging. That's that's the first finding. Now, you'll be surprised to hear that I disagree that we can't make the part of it. The second finding, um, states that this that we're not making a special exception for this, this property. And I think it's quite clear we wouldn't be making a special exception in this case. If you go down, we had prepared a list of properties in the sort of North Fair Oaks area that had exceptions. And staff said, we're really looking for immediate neighborhood. So we started looking at immediate neighborhood. And as Commissioner Polito mentioned, almost every house on the street has a side setback.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, intrusion. So that was pretty compelling from my side. I should say we didn't want to have to bring a variance.
Mm-hmm.
But and I know it's a high bar, so we come kind of humbly with this. But with those those things aligning with the neighborhood sort of already having that pattern, with neighbor support, we have letters of neighbor support, we felt like we could make that finding. We're not saying we're special, we're going to be the only one in North Fair Oaks portion of Atherton to have this, uh, intrusion. So I I would sort of softly disagree that we can't make that finding. And I think it's it's pretty clear because, again, we're not asking for something that isn't hasn't been done. Uh, and so now let me, uh, address something that Rada mentioned. So they also stated there are other ways of doing this, and that is true. One other way of doing this is not building an ADU. And now, as you know, or you may or may not know, we have the ADU by right. So we can't, the the ADU can't come through this body. It can't be denied. So the the ADU is specifically for our client's daughter. And that is an important part of the project. So we do have a decision to make. And maybe what Rada was alluding to was, we could put the ADU in the backyard. So that is the way to make this conform. You could open the back doors of the house and have the ADU fill up the entire backyard.
Yeah.
And and that, I mean, that would be the way to get this to work. Then the carport could be on the right and be conforming. And the decision we made was not to do that.
Right.
And so the the question there is, do we have a right to a backyard? And I would say, you're an R one A lot, you look around town, right, a hundred percent of the R one A lots have a rear yard, right? About ninety-nine point nine. Uh, so I think that finding, again, from our side, seems like, uh, we that could be supported. Then the other, I guess, if we look at the final finding, and I'm not versed on the legalese of if you have to, the the way this was presented, maybe a misunderstanding, is that the item that you're asking a variance for has to be supported in the zoning code. That seems like an oxymoron. You wouldn't ask for a variance if it was in the zoning code. So the purpose of a variance is to make a judgment about, is something reasonable? And does it support? It talks about the general plan. So as we stated in our letter, we are, the general plan supports maintaining the trees of the town. And Lord knows, we need to do that more now after the events of the last couple of days. So the idea here is to maintain the trees, and that was the beginning of this, uh, uh, application. So that supports the goals of the town. And we've given a lot of thought in the town's ordinance to how to maintain the trees. Uh, with eight times and ten times and six times and digging and all this stuff. So I I would argue that maintaining the trees is a goal of the town. This is doing that. This is supporting the goals of the town. Additionally, the ADU providing housing is a is a goal here in town as well. We know that's a hot item. So this is also supporting that goal. So I I and again, I don't know the the legal structure of if you have to. Again, I I it seems to me that if it's reasonable, it doesn't, if it's not in the code, you're not going to come for a variance. So I hope that's somewhat compelling.
All right, good. Thank you. Any questions?
And the reason for a carport instead of a garage, I I mean, it's not clear to me it makes a difference, but at least we know the garages are spoken about in the code, um, to just aesthetics.
Yeah, I mean, and and I wanted to get to that. So the re- reason for the paper there is just to show that the house is a nice, hopefully a nice looking house. The carport is included kind of architecturally in there. And the reason for it, it's a void. Right? So it's less intrusive. If that's a garage, it's more intrusive. At least that was the thinking.
All right. Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Now, yeah, uh, my my question is, you know, it's a variance, right? So you know, it's a high bar.
Sure.
So design-wise around the site, didn't your client said go with this? Let's see if we can get the variance versus go another route. I mean, we don't see very many variances. There's a reason for it.
That's right. And and again, we didn't take it lightly. If you if you've been by the property.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of opportunity because there are a lot of trees. And so we basically just stood out there and went through those that list. If you you can put the ADU on one side or the other, anything that goes at the back left, we're coming here. Either for a variance or a tree exception. So but we felt like, let's not do that. That's a challenge. Also, the challenge with that is the trees aren't completely on the subject property. They're also on the neighbor property. So that seemed difficult to manage as well. So that was the discussion, to you know, and we did go through the the various other ways of doing. There is another way to do this, which was to put the ADU in the front setback. We've never done that. That is certainly not consistent with the goals of the town.
Right.
And and I didn't even understand that you could do that, but we could do that. That just didn't seem that seems worse than all these other things.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? And I'm gonna, nobody, nobody online either. Uh, what, my screen doesn't have all the faces on it that, uh, that this this screen has, so I'll just look at yours, I guess. All right. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the public, uh, comment section and bring it back. So I I've got some ideas on this one, but yeah. So I so here's the thing, it's miszoned. It's flat out miszoned. It it's 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 zoned, uh, uh, like a much bigger lot. Um, and, uh, uh, that, uh, that to me creates a lot of other things, plus the fact that we would be be, uh, uh, cognizant of the trees here. And all over LA, people squeeze a an ADU in the backyard, and you look from the house into the ADU, and I'm sitting there seeing these houses on Zillow going like, why would anybody do that as a design? And, uh, and the idea of having an ADU in front of in front of a lot is even worse to me. So of of all the ways that this would fall best from a planning perspective on this site, this is the best plan. So for me, there's a couple of things that come into play here. First of all, the the misapplication of the R one, uh, zone is the first one. And the fact that it the applicant is asking for something that was in the code of an R one B makes a lot of sense to me. So if he came in and said, I want a ten-foot setback, like, oh, wait a minute, even the R one B doesn't allow that. But this is what this is when within the range of that, which is more consistent with a lot, it is. The fact that it's a it fulfills an, uh, uh, a, uh, Sally's, uh, look at the the trees, uh, protection is a big one. And plus, we we get it, we avoid the neighbor issue. So all these things line up. Plus, now I've I've double-checked, and I'm just barely out. This is just barely out of range. I live two blocks away from this, um, uh, south of it. So uh, I see this Winchester mystery house all the time when I'm walking around the neighborhood. And so and so the idea of having, uh, this, this, the property improved and have it be, uh, an ADU for the community and have it done the right way, all lines up for me in a way that we can approve this, uh, uh, this variance well within the realm of, you know, uh, acceptable, uh, 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 variance for me.
I agree one hundred percent.
I do too, Eric. And I think the architectural renderings here are very good. It shows it's quite an attractive structure and a practical one.
See, my my issues, I have a couple of issues. One, what were the alternatives, right? And I agree, seeing the ADU in the front yard isn't my first choice either. Two, by going against staff on a variance, do we now end up with thirty more of these that staff gets? And now all of a sudden, they're constantly being bombarded with this.
Well, the thing I would suggest is that we look at this, these lots. Well, the thing I would suggest is that we look at this, these lot sizes throughout the community and see if there are pockets of these that are mis- misapplied. So for me, this this block is mis- miszoned. At least in these this particular area. Because I drive, I when I drive up and down that, I see these much narrower, smaller lots that that are different than the ones across the street and on either side of uh either side of the two blocks. So if if we have, we have a situation where we're requiring people people to conform with a a zone that is not appropriate for their lot size, it's a mistake by it's a it's a it's it's asking for variance. So if anybody walks in here and says, yeah, I've got a miss, I've got a a property that's that's a lot smaller than these areas. I'm going to be thinking, okay, how does, how do I make it con- conform to what the size of that lot really is?
Let me offer a thought.
Yeah.
So. If this was a question of equitable discretion, I would definitely vote in favor of granting the variance.
Yeah.
But that's not the test. The test is, as the deputy counsel has said, we have to satisfy all four elements. For granting a a variance. And I think it's clear to me from my review of the record that at least one of these is not satisfied. And as a matter of applying the right standard, as far as I'm concerned, we should not grant the variance for a number of reasons. First of all, it's not in accord with the rule. Secondly, I agree with Commissioner Lamb that if we depart from requiring all four elements to be satisfied, I think we're building a bad precedent. So I'd like to thank the applicant for an excellent presentation, which was very compelling. But that's my view.
So I have a question from for a legal question then. I'm looking for ways to, I believe that all four are complied with. From the standpoint of not only, not only the actual location and the way it's laid out, but also for from the standpoint of our requirements are based upon something that is not applicable on this lot. So if if a if on the item on this, on the fourth, the fourth requirement, it's saying you have to conform with something that's not conformable. That doesn't seem to be logical to me at all.
That that's not really what we're saying. So Chair Lamb, from your perspective, I think your argument for supporting finding four would be that by granting the variance, we're furthering the top, the general plan, goals and policies with respect to encouraging A D U construction and maintaining the trees in in the town. And so from your perspective, satisfying element four really weighs on those other factors that the applicant also spoke to. Yes, that's how you would make finding four in the affirmative.
Actually, my question was more, do we want it? The zoning is what it is. I mean, we hit the to use a golf analogy, the ball's in the rough. We it is where it is. I mean, I in this particular case, if we're going to do this, we're starting this all over town. I mean, I know there's examples where a variance could be needed at this, at T P Z's, you know, whatever it might be. But this is a biggie. I mean, we think about it, even in that eight years you and I've been together on this, how many variances have we seen? Not many.
Not many, but they're usually around trees, around trees. So the other aspect of this is that if they come here with a variance around tree, would have been, would it have been accepted? So my answer would be yes. So there's a couple of things on this. First of all, many things have changed during the during those eight years.
Yeah.
One of them is A D Us wherever you want them. The second is, it was totally consistent for us to make this exception based on the on the on the location of the trees. And the thing, we would have naturally done that if he walked in with a variance on the trees. So that combined with the what was outlined on item four makes all four of those complied with for this for this particular lot on this condition, in particular situation. That's that's what I'm comfortable with on it. So, yeah, I and you know, you know, I'm I'm not a person for big time variance at all. But on this particular lot with this situation, with being able to to make a statement of compliance on those on those four items, I feel comfortable on that. And if anybody comes forward and says, hey, you did this, why don't you do it on ours? I'll be able to say, these are the reasons I don't, I don't don't approve it.
If if I were making the motion, I'd make it to deny.
All right.
So I'm just, I'm, I think Perry's there too. I'm not saying, I'm not counting votes.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, I just where I see it, I don't. Those smaller lots, anybody who buys those, I get it. They're they're looking for a different look, feel, utility, whatever it might be.
Cost.
Cost.
Yeah.
Right, but that but there are trade offs too, right? So and that's why I was asking, what what other things could be done on this? Or should they go back to the drawing board and say, here's the way we make it work? And they move the A D around and we go, whoops, well, we don't like that one either. I don't know, I don't want to.
Right.
I'm in the business, so I know how it feels to kind of be going through this process. But I would say, in in my eight years, there's probably been three variances, maybe four. And so I just, I just always want to be careful about that. Yeah, maybe.
Around trees particularly. Yeah, there's been a lot of variances around trees. So so Rada and Song, I I I'm going to make a motion to approve. And to do that, I need you to be able to generate the the document, the documentation around around the four four reasons why it is in compliance. Can you do that or not?
Yes, so just to clarify for finding number four.
Yes.
The standard is, the variance is consistent with the objectives of the general plan and the zoning code. So the basically the general direction of the general plan and the zoning ordinance. So if it was strict, it has to comply with zoning, or there's no way to be a variance. So it's really about the objectives. So that's the standard. In the staff report, there are a couple of general plan policies that the planning commission can consider as part of trying to make that finding. And then also for finding number two. The standard is, the granting of the variance does not constitute a grant of special privilege that's inconsistent with the limitations of the properties in the vicinity. Vicinity. And the applicant has provided some information for the planning commission to consider in terms of just what the general context of the of the neighborhood is. And we were very specific. We had worked with the applicant to limit the the properties in question to the direct neighborhood. So this is a direct correlation. It's not, you know, the whole area in vicinity of, like, in that whole area, in that whole neighborhood. It's just that that block, and I think like right around the corner.
All right, then I'm going to make the motion.
For for finding number two to be made in the affirmative, that lines up with what Commissioners Polito, Lerner, and Chair, Chair Lamb, what you were saying earlier, with the general feel of of this grouping of parcels, all being smaller and really feeling more like the R one B. And so to make that finding in the affirmative, you would essentially be saying that because this parcel is so very much like all of its adjacent parcels, that's why it would not be granted a special privilege to this particular parcel.
All right, and that would be okay legally?
I'm sorry, what was that last?
That would be okay legally.
That would be okay.
All right, great, then I will move the motion.
Your discretion to make these findings, so that's based on your discussion earlier, that's how I would frame that finding.
All right, good. I move the planning commission approve the variance of forty two San Benito based on the findings outlined in our discussion of the planning mission that's going to be documented by staff. Subject to conditions listed in the draft variance certificate allowed to reduce the front setback from the accessory structure carport from required minimum thirty feet to to zero feet or for the main built building line.
Second.
Move in a second, any any comments or whatever? All right, let's do this on a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nerancek?
No.
Commissioner Polio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
No.
All right, there we go. Okay, we're off to a roaring start. Item four B. I didn't see anybody.
Chair Lamb, did you actually vote on that last item? I didn't hear your name be called.
What'd you say?
Did you vote on that last item? I didn't hear your name be called.
Oh, good, did you call my name?
Chair Lamb.
I I made the motion, I I'll say yes. I'll I'll break this high. All right, item four B, and this is also continuance to the tree protection zone exception on two four four Park Lane. Let's go ahead with same procedure. Let's go ahead with the overview from staff, and then we'll follow up with questions and and then open up public comment. Thank you for the work on this project too on four A. Right. Who's got this one, Rada or Song?
I got this one. Coming up on your screen is the two forty four Park Lane project. The T P Z exception is for a new proposed single family residence of nine thousand square feet and a thousand hundred square feet of the detached A D U. And we've got five trees that require a T P Z exception that's over and beyond Sally's purview at staff level. I'm going to zoom in on the trees. We start at the bottom right. This T P, I must say, before we get into each tree, the applicants have worked extensively with the town arborists and this, what we see in in this configuration for the A D U, the driveway, all of this has gone back and forth a couple of times for us to present to the planning commission and in today's discussion. And the the tree on the bottom right where my cursor is, is for the driveway. This large tree, I can zoom in. This tree is a forty three inch redwood. It would affect the main buildings, buildings, built area, the the basement. The one above is going pretty close to the A D U that's proposed as a thousand hundred square feet A D U. There's also, there there used to be more accessory structures in the before this iteration of the design, but it has been significantly revised. You can see that the main setback line is at within the A T X, but there is some work in the A D U that's going with into the planning commission's purview of discussion. This tree, a thirty two inch oak, is also borderlining the thousand hundred square feet A D U. And this tree, the largest one, I believe, is a ninety one inch redwood, would would be in the the T P Z is in the way of the Bo- Bo- Bocce Court. I don't know how to say Bocce, I hope that's right. That.
Bocce, gotcha.
Bocce, okay, Bocce Court, sorry, thank you, Chair Lamb. And the main house itself. As you can see, Sally has extensively worked with the applicant and she has approved, recommended approval on all of them. And I would leave the discussion to her to speak more about the individual trees. And Sally, I can, I can scroll if you want me to present, or I could just leave it at the site plan.
Yeah, leave it at the site, the world site. And but the Bocce course is all sand, right? The most Bocce courts that I've worked on, I've I've played on are sand. Is this is a sand Bocce court?
I mean, there'll probably be some kind of base rock or something.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be on grade or anything.
Okay, great, all right.
Um, so we can go through them one by one. We can talk about the one that the driveway tree. Um, so there was already existing flag lot and some driveway there. Um, and they wanted to go closer. But I I wouldn't go less than six times, and so they amended their plan to do that. So I feel comfortable with this just because there was already some existing driveway there. And I do want to say that there's a lot of very large trees on this lot. A ninety two inch redwood is a huge tree, and it really hinders that whole section of the lot.
Takes over the front yard.
Yeah. So I think they're working within the limits of the trees. There's very few trees that they wanted to remove, so they're trying to preserve most of the trees on the site. So for the A D U, they're asking for an exception for the A D U. And then they're asking for an exception for the main house. But as you can see, there's already existing main house in sections of that. So. They're not asking for too much extra than what was already existing on the site. And in some cases, they're improving the site, especially for the ninety two inch tree. They're moving things further away from that tree.
Right. Uh, just for a technical question. Do we have to make an exception on A D U? I thought that needs to stay.
If it's less, if it's eight hundred square feet or less, they're allowed, we we don't get to have a say in that, even with trees.
Yeah.
But if it's more than eight hundred square feet, then we can put our restrictions on.
All right, I clarify.
And this is eleven hundred square for that.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
No.
No.
No. All right, good, we'll hear the applicant, are they represented?
Hello, everyone, I'm Laura Mae Cerusi with Pacific Peninsula Architecture. And so I think Rod has already sort of said, and Sally has said, we've been working back and forth with the town to try and come to a good solution because there's so many big trees on the site. And so the homeowner really wants to keep all the trees and keep them healthy. But we did some, one thing I wanted to mention was that there was some root exploration, which I think you got some photos of what we found. So on that diagram, I don't know if Rod or whoever can pull the the site plan diagram, there's the green, big green bold lines. So we did do root exploration, especially than the big ninety two inch redwood. We didn't find anything along that entire edge there. You can see, there you go, that's that L shape there. So we didn't find any roots in that trench. And then on the other side, we did find one four inch root. And so you can see, I I noted it there as a red, kind of a red line. So let me go to the other side of the the other side of the house there. So we did find one root on that side. And we talked to our arborist, and it's a four inch root. And, you know, given how far it is from that redwood, if we cut that one root, we should be okay. And the rest of the entire trench going all the way to the rear setback, or sorry, the rear setback line, we didn't find any other roots. And that was down to about thirty inches. So we feel pretty confident that, you know, the trees are going to be okay. So basically, we're just trying to situate the house between the two trees and sort of shift a little bit further away from that side, but then puts us closer to that larger redwood on the other side. So some of that we're playing with. And then just also wanted to mention that, yeah, they said it was a full basement, but the extent of the basement is actually just that dark gray hatch. And then the light gray is crawl space or slab on grades. So again, we're trying to keep the deeper portions further from the trees as best as possible.
Great, perfect, perfect. Good work. Uh, any questions?
No, no.
How deep was the tre- were the trenches?
It was twenty four to thirty inches, so minimum twenty four. And I think the redwood roots typically are.
Yeah, the redwood roots are typically in the first two feet, two and a half feet of soil. So I don't think they would need to go deeper than thirty inches.
Probably the weight of that tree pushes them down.
Yeah.
That's a big tree. All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, I can answer any other question.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, nobody's available. All right, then I'll go ahead.
Check Rada to see if there was anyone online who'd like to speak.
All right, is there somebody online?
Uh, I don't see anybody online. But I had a request that Sally could speak more into the mic. I can't hear her clearly on this end.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and bring you back for the discussion and action as appropriate with the commission.
I think, thank you guys for working with with Sally and vice versa. I'm happy to make a motion.
Yes, any question, any any other comments, questions? Sounds straightforward, all right, good.
Okay. Move the planning commission find the exception to the tree protections on T P Z for the five trees. Number one, tree number one sixteen point nine, D B H redwood tree at six X T P Z for driveway. Tree number twelve, which is number two, twenty point three inch D B H redwood tree at seven times for eleven hundred square foot A D U. Tree number thirteen, forty three point seven inch D B H redwood tree at six point five X for shallow foundation and seven point eight X for full basement. Number four, tree number fifteen, thirty two point seven inch valley oak, seven point six times for eleven hundred square foot A D U. Number five, tree number sixteen, ninety one point six inch D B H redwood tree at five point four, three times for new residents and three times for the Bocce Court to allow for the construction of a new single family residence and attached garage and A D U at two forty four Park Lane. This project would not be contrary to purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report. And that, the commission approved the T P Z exception subject to the conditions as listed in the draft T P Z exception certificate.
Moved. There's second.
I I have one question on the motion. That includes the hand excavation, et cetera, et cetera. It's in the recommendations. Because I think it's.
I assume so.
Yes, it would include those.
That that last sentence covers that.
Yeah.
Then I second it.
All right, moved in a second. All right, you, we got our money's worth out of you on that motion.
That was the longest motion ever.
Motion on a on a on a Commissioner for square foot, that was a good one. All right, we have a move, a motion in second, I need a roll call, please. Yeah.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nerancek?
Yes.
Commissioner Polito?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Chair Lamb?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Good job, everyone.
Very good.
All right, thank you for the wait. All right, item four C is a is a request for a tentative map and conditional exception to allow sub- subdivision of two and a half acres lots. And we'll go ahead and start with the staff overview. Rada, you on this one?
Yes, sir. I'm sharing screen right now.
All right.
I've had some technical difficulty publishing part of this correspondence. And I sent you, and I'm going to share an exhibit that was a late correspondence from staff. And the lot at forty three Santiago is a two point five acre lot. The applicant is. The applicant is proposing to subdivide it into two uh substandard lots. The reason I'm saying substandards is the proposed lots do not meet the lot width as defined in Title sixteen of the subdivision um uh subdivision portion of the municipal code. The the lots that are proposed uh are in front of you as proposed lot one and lot two. They are um, they meet um the density requirement of a proposed R one A. Each of them is one point two and one point three acres. As you can see for the down, it has uh, what it does have uh existing is uh a current uh single family residence, which the applicant wants to subdivide. And what you see is the new proposed lot with the new um uh development uh footprint. Uh, the conditional exception, I'm going to stop, share and go back to my staff report to walk you through the staff analysis. That's required of all lots that are seeking subdivision uh in Atherton at this point. The required standard for all on any R one A lot is a minimum of an acre. The lot width is one seventy five feet, as we saw previously even in in an item for for a, the lot depth is two hundred. The proposed lot in each of these, they meet the size, they they do not meet lot width. The applicant is seeking a conditional exception to allow the substandard lot widths. And in order to make those findings, we'll have to uh, planning commission is uh needs to make force uh four findings per the municipal code. The specials that, the first finding is that there are special circumstances of conditions affecting the property. Um, staff uh opines that the finding number one cannot be met. This uh, this existing lot is fairly trapezoid in shape, as you can see. And it is, it is not a hilly side, the topography of the side is fa- fairly regular. And there's nothing special in terms of the circumstances or the conditions that affect the property. And so the staff, so staff thinks that the finding number one cannot be met. The exception is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of this substantial property right. The uh, the applicant has requested to subdivide this two and a half acre and in and lot. And then um per the, per the density uh that is allowable for R one A in the general plan, they are creating an acre lot for each lot that they are newly creating. It's just not big enough to subdivide in compli- in compliance with the substandard lot width. And uh the exception would be necessary for this particular site geometry in order for uh, in order for the applicant to meet the the required density on both the subdivided lots. And so, you know, finding number one can be met. The granting of the except, exception will not be detrimental to public welfare. The 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 exception is to uh, the the granting of the exception, i- this finding can be met. It does not uh create any new concerns for traffic or it doesn't, i- i- it meets the development standards of R one A pretty much uh with all the required development standards. And so staff opines that the finding number three can be met. Uh, granting number four is that is that the granting of the exception doesn't violate the requirements, goals and policy in the spirit of the law. And uh in in the, in 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 the purview of uh the housing crisis that we are in, the conditional exception would allow for two new houses and uh to be built with additional A D Us. And so staff makes the finding that this can be met. This granting of the exception would not violate any of these goals and policies of the, of of specifically with the housing goals and policies that we have right now. I wanna share that we worked with the applicant and we asked the question of why they wouldn't be doing an S B nine lot split for this application. And they did opine that they had, they could not meet the carrying cost of the S B nine for owner occupancy. And um because of the findings that we can't, staff cannot make findings for special circumstances of conditions, we are recommending that the planning commission uh deny this um, you know, conditional exception at this point. How, you know, given all the, all the analysis that are provided in front of you. And um, this actually ends my presentation and I'm here to answer any questions if you may.
Chair Lane, if I may make a clarification, um, the planning commission is making a recommendation to the council.
Oh.
Um, so just to clarify.
Right.
Um, the planning commission does not have the ultimate authority for the uh conditional exception.
Right, thank you. Questions?
No questions. I do. So on on, um, and I don't know if this is for you, Sean, or for the, for the uh town attorney. So what would be considered under number one as a special circumstance? I mean, are there two things, five things, what? Wha- what could that be?
Not any one particular thing that we would take into account there, but what we would look at would be unusual topography that would maybe perhaps make some portion of the site uh undevelopable. And then maybe they'd want to subdivide the lot and set aside some portion of the the parcel for conservation easement, for example. Or if we had a stream running through at a, at an odd angle that would naturally subdivide the parcel, or we would logically then draw a dividing line. Or if we had a an oddly shaped parcel that would lend itself to a subdivision that would result in in nonconforming lot widths.
With a
Here we've got a flat parcel, we've got a parcel that's nearly re- nearly square.
Would the trapezoid aspect of it be a unique aspect? Because if we're not trapezoid, it would be divisible. What, see what I mean? We, the the question I had
The trapezoid aspect isn't really unique here because most of the parcels in the town are are slightly trapezoidal the way this parcel is.
That's correct, as 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 one unit, but when you divide it in two, it creates a new problem. That's not a factor.
No, because here again, we're in the R one A zone where we've got these requirements that that impose this condition that we're looking to deviate from.
Yeah.
And so it's not really a unique circumstance to this parcel.
Did the town submit this on the housing element?
As part of the, as part of the, as a double?
Th- this is not one of the sites that were identified in the housing element. Um, the only sites that were identified in the housing element was twenty three Oak Wood and then all of the P F S sites um for multifamily.
Right. There was, it was not part of the listing.
Is there a reason, were were any other two acre or two and a half acre or three acre sites? What I mean, why wouldn't this have been added, given the size of it?
Uh, so the zoning still applies. Um, so part of the way the general plan works is the general plan uh only looks at density. And so the zoning is what implements the the general plan density. And so the housing element isn't really looking at that. Um, S B nine was something that was addressed in the housing element. Uh, we anticipate that there will be a a number of S B nine projects coming through. Um, and we did talk to the applicant and explain that S B nine could be an alternative. It's just that there's this three year carrying cost with S B nine that they didn't
Yeah, that's why S B nine is not gonna work real well in the town. That's that's S B nine, S B nine wa- wa- is, you know, most people are not gonna drop, drop down their own own house, divide the property in two, build a new property and then sell the other one. That's just not the, the people, people are selling their land or like retiring or going away or whatever, yeah. Bob?
Uh, I would argue just the fact that we have a two and a half acre piece of property that we can turn into two properties, given the issues we have with the state makes it a special circumstance.
Me too.
I would also argue that um there's over three hundred properties in the town in the R one A zone that are listed in the report that have less than a hundred seventy five foot frontage. So we're not doing anything that hasn't been done three hundred times before. To to not, to not take advantage of the space, given the problems we have with the state of California, I think would be foolhardy. We should allow this to go forward.
So let's, let's hear, uh, let's uh, uh, we haven't opened up, we haven't opened up for public comment yet. So that'll, that'll be something, something that we need, right? So we'll, we'll come back to this when we hear the public comment. Alright, I'll go ahead and open up the uh public comment section and we'll hear from the applicant. Are they represented? By hearing a ticking, I know you're on the clock and so that
Must be us now.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna hurt the wood. Alright, we're going big today. We're going, we're going old school planning, that's
There we go.
No, I I I I got them, I got them, but not on this scale, which I
Yeah.
I I I kept on reducing my printing gate uh printout to smaller and smaller scale to make it fit. I I do have these, but they're lots, lot harder to reach.
Sean, do you want me to share screen on the exhibits?
Uh, I should be able to share it here from our left.
Got you, right? Is that you?
Yes.
Alright, good.
So good evening, planning commissioners, and thank you, Rada, for your brief presentation. I'd like to draw some more attention to
Go ahead and introduce yourself just for the record.
Sean Loops with Pacific Peninsula Architecture.
Thanks.
Um, I like to draw some closer attention to the exhibits that were sent out late in the game, even though they were part of our initial submittal, just to give a, some more graphic and visuals to our proposal here. Um, so here's the the full existing lot at forty three Santiago with the trapezoidal shape. Um, also to note that none of the property lines on the either side are parallel to each other. So it creates an an odd angle for the property. And when looking at the subdivision, we tried to look at counteracting the the angles from the property line to straighten it out, to get as close to a right angle as possible on the front, along the front property line there. Um, creating two trapezoidal shapes, um, the left lot on proposed lot one would be wider on the front, tapering to the back. And on the opposite lot, narrower in the front, widening out in the back to create uh buildable lots there. Um, we did a tree protection zone study, which shows that it creates two uh lots that have little to no impact on the heritage trees. Uh, upon further study, we wanted to call attention to the immediate structures in the area, um noting that there are, but there are two nonconforming width lots directly, uh, one directly adjacent to it at two two seven Park Lane and one across the street at fifty Santiago Avenue. Um, so as you can see, the the size and scale of these lots fit well into the fabric of the neighborhood um and do not create any nonconformities in terms of appearance. One thing we also wanted to note was that if you look back at the subdivision of the area back in nineteen oh five, you saw the original properties here. Um, and this is actually one of the last two remaining parcels that has not been subdivided. Forty three Santiago and in the corner of we know, Noel Logue and Park Lane here that you see there.
Yep.
Uh, so we believe that that in itself is a special circumstance for the property that there's been several in the area that have been subdivided to two or or more lots. Um, and I think the most, the biggest graphic that we could show here is the nonconforming lot width properties. And to clarify, um, Bob's comment earlier, this is only looking at R one A lots on the west side of El Camino. And the does not include any lots on the east side. Um, so as you can see here, they're spread throughout the town, um, both in our neighborhood and throughout central Atherton. And many of these nonconforming lot widths um do not meet the density as well. So we believe that, you know, with our our proposal, we're creating a one point three acre and a one point two acre lot, which well meets the general plan guidelines for for lots here. So I'd like to continue our presentation with Bill McClure, who'll be speaking on her behalf to help navigate some of the legal findings.
Alright, good, thank you. Actually, I have a question for you. Go ahead. Um, A D Us?
What?
Will you include A D Us in these?
Yes, yeah, we were asked as part of the presentation to exclude development options for the properties just to keep it as clean as possible for what we were reviewing. But yes, the goal would be to have two main houses with detached A D Us or attached A D Us on on both properties.
So when you say goal, do you mean goal or you mean commit?
Can, to commit, yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Sure, um, yeah, I'm Bill McClure. I'm an attorney in Menlo Park. I've been practicing in Menlo Park for forty three years. Part of my practice, I was the city attorney for Menlo Park for twenty seven years.
Yeah.
So I'm really familiar with zoning codes, subdivision ordinances, required findings, et cetera. Um, and so first, a couple of points in terms of the staff report. There's kind of a misquote of the first standard, which is recommended for denial. And the the language that appears in the staff report says, special circumstances of conditions affecting the property, which would seem to imply that it has to be a condition of the property. The code actually says special circumstances or conditions affecting the property.
Oh.
So it can either be a circumstance or a condition that affects the property.
There you go.
Which kind of goes to Commissioner Polito's point earlier is that, you know, your recommendation regarding S B nine, that occupancy not be a requirement, it's really not the holding cost of the property. It's the fact that a property owner, the applicant, who subdivides the property has to live in one of the houses for three years.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a a clear impediment. So, so that is a circumstance. But I think the bigger circumstance is it's the depth of this lot that makes it, you know, the special circumstance or the special condition actually as well as a circumstance. That, and then you couple that with the fact that, you know, the lots in this subdivision, there were originally fifty, I think there were fifty seven lots, there are twenty eight lots in the original subdivision. There are now fifty seven lots in the same subdivision. Every single parcel, with the exception of two, have been subdivided. And the only reason this hasn't been subdivided before is because it was in a single family home built in the center of it. And nobody, you know, for a long period of time, the economics were to just resell a house and not subdivide, not build new houses. But this meets directly with your general plan, housing element objectives. And it is in fact listed in the general plant, the housing element. It is listed in, on page ninety six, it refers to underutilized parcels for further subdivision. And page three sixty four of appendix five, this property is listed as two and a half acres as one of those underutilized parcels. So again, it specifically was identified by the planning commission and the city council in your adopted housing element.
Correct.
So on the basis of the depth of the lot, the the subdivision of other, the subdivision of other parcels within the subdivision and the circumstance that it meets your housing element objectives of of having more housing, we think you can make the finding or finding them a lot.
Alright, any questions? I would say you earned your fee tonight. Thank you. Say, good job. Thank you. That was, that's very helpful.
Uh, I I'm happy to make a motion, but I'm a little worn out from the last one.
Let me close, let me close out the public hearing. I know you're excited about this. Alright, uh, anyone else here to speak on this item? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and action. Uh, that's, that that helps a lot, first of all, and and for our current uh legal counsel, it might be worth uh just tuning in on some of those concepts uh for future few years, things we're doing. Because uh that was clearly good uh insight into how we go about doing things in the future. So it's really gonna be very helpful to remember the, remember this testimony.
Great.
Anyone else have a comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just offer this. I I know, I know I'm gonna be in the minority on this, but uh, you know, I would vote against uh this because again, I think the reason we have black letter rules is so that there is certainty about when applicants come before a commission that they know one way or another, that they're likely to obtain a certain result. And so, you know, it's, I don't want to engage in a line drawing exercise. And here it appears that there's a thirty foot uh deficiency uh for lot two, if I'm reading this correctly. You know, so what if, what if the lot was only fifty feet instead of a hundred and forty four feet or sixty feet or eighty feet? You know, you're you're just opening the door to uh line drawing exercises, and that's not what the law should be. Um, so I just wanted to to say that and uh, but the presentation Um, so I just wanted to, to say that, and, uh, but the presentations were both excellent, thank you.
Good. Bob?
Well, I don't know how we go about this, I presume if and when we have a approved housing element, we'll have to redo the general plan. And some of the rules, like the hundred-and-seventy-five foot lot width, probably are totally out of order, given the number of exceptions we have. Just looking at this plot plan. Almost every, every property in that neighborhood would fall in that underutilized category that, um, that we're gonna have to deal with. More of these, I would guess, and maybe sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah, one of the things that, 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 you know, we're, we're sort of boxed ourselves into a couple of things. There is not one town around us that would say, "Oh darn, you're only, you're not allowing a one-point-two acre lot to be approved." Uh, this is the kind of stuff that gets us, gets us in the newspaper, like, hey, this is, this is too small a lot. This is, uh, one-point-two acres is half an acre bigger than my own property in Atherton, uh, or four tenths of an acre. Uh, and I, mine's called an Atherton acre, uh, so, um, it, it's, it's, it's important that, for, for going forward, first of all, we're, we're in a new era of planning in the town. All right, and so, uh, coming up with the ways to make one-acre lots acceptable is a much better strategy for me than, than, uh, than coming up with bad, bad front yard designs on ADUs. So the more, the more single-family home, uh, uh, setups we get, we get to our number, we keep the character of the town, and we make it so that we can, we can handle, the infrastructure can handle it. I, I, as I've said before, I spent a lot of time in LA with seeing my kids, and they, and, uh, and you see, uh, uh, a gar, no garages, because they're all switched to ADUs. You see, uh, two-bedroom, one-bath homes that all of a sudden are three-bedroom, one-bath homes, because they've been added on. And there's seven people living across those two, two domes sales, and all their cars are parked along the street. And that's what happens when you do, uh, sort of infill bad planning. And one of the, one of the things I'm looking for in going forward is, one, we come up with some modifications to our, our policy, if this were a flag lot. The front of this property would be considered that long flag lot, and they'd have the long driveway up to the back backyard lot, which is also, in my opinion, not as good a, a design. So this is fully, uh, fully, uh, complies, and I, I really appreciate the ORE in the, uh, in the highlight, that very helpful. Uh, is there any legal opinion on this one that we, that, uh, we need to hear from on our side? Is your assessment?
The explanation I gave earlier was predicated on the actual text of the code, not the typo in the staff report, I just wanted to make that clarification.
So with it, with that clarification to us, uh, then is that, uh, is, is that an acceptable way to accept that, that, uh, that, uh, compliance? Or that except, that aspect of the, of the compliance?
Yeah, so the, the, much like on the earlier item, we can have Sung create language based on the findings from the discussion you all have had.
And yet that'll make those findings affirmative. You'll be comfortable with that from a legal aspect?
Yes.
All right, great. Ready for a motion?
Uh, can I?
Happy to.
Can I provide some clarification for the commission, um, before you make a motion? Um, in, in reference to finding one, um, what the planning commission can consider is the lot depth, because that is a specific condition that's beyond, um, what the zoning code is required, or the subdivision code is requiring. Um, and also, it, it is consistent with the general plan, uh, the subdivision ordinance, like the zoning code, is a method of implementing the general plan. And so if that's something that the council decides that they wanna do as part of the land use element, we would have to update the subdivision ordinance, um, this is not the zoning ordinance. And so the findings themselves are slightly different than the variance findings in the zoning ordinance, I would say they're a little bit looser. Um, 'cause the variance findings are very, very specific, where this is, this is really trying to, um, make sure that there's like good development. Um, and then specifically going back to finding one, if you look at the context map as well, on page two, you can see that, um, on. That side of Santiago, there are lots that have reduced width, and then just across the street, you can see that there's a subdivision with the same width, but there are also two lots, and one of them is like a flag lot. So that's, those are the types of things that you can consider as part of, uh, making the findings.
All right, very good.
Um, and also just to make sure that, um, there are also findings that need to be made for the tentative map itself. And one of them are predicated on, uh, making the findings for the exception. So as you go through and making, making the motion for, um, the conditional exception, uh, make those, and then if you wanna make the findings on, uh, the subdivision as well.
So we might need some help with that, so, but I understood, like, sixty-two percent of that, maybe eighty-five, so let's get the clarification as we go, all right? All right.
Happy to read it. Okay, move the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the tentative map and conditional exception at forty-three Santiago, based on findings outlined in the planning commission. Or by the planning commission, subject to the conditions listed in the draft conditional exception certificate. Allow the reduced lot widths for the proposed substandard lots and direct staff to file a notice of exemption for the project. And?
And? Sung, this is where you help.
Yes, um, instead of referring to the, um, draft conditional exception certificate, 'cause I think that was, um, a recommend, a recommendation for denial.
Right.
Um, it would be changed to that, and you, what you could do is refer to the information provided by the staff report, provided by, um, the applicant, and the discussion, um. With the planning commission in terms of, um, meeting finding one in particular, and everything else you can just rely on the staff report.
All right, so I, I think you agree with that, what he just said, great.
Is this something that staff can add later, or is this?
Yes, we, we can amend that.
Great. If, if. If the applicant's fine with it, then I'm fine with it.
All right, just make sure that it matches what we just discussed, all right?
Second.
Moving seconded, any, are there any other comments? All right, then we'll go for a roll call.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nerantik?
No.
Commissioner Polito?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lam?
Yes.
And Chair Lane?
Yes. All right. All right, and then item four D, for those of you who stayed up late for our session tonight, a request for the removal of one eighteen-inch heritage oak tree and one, uh, uh, three X TPZ exception to build a new tennis court at twenty Tuscaloosa Avenue. Let's start with the, uh, with the, uh, staff overview, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chair Lane, um, this twenty Tuscaloosa, uh, the applicant is requesting on a point acre, point eight acre lot in an R one A zone. The applicant is requesting, um, the approval of the removal of tree number eighteen shown, showing, shown on your screens. Uh, and also a TPZ exception for tree number nineteen, that is going to be, uh, impacted by the proposal of a new tennis court in the backyard. Uh, of the property, there is a portion of this project that also includes a six-hundred, uh, six-hundred square feet, uh, ADUs. And, uh, under eight-hundred square feet, ADUs are not, uh, in the purview of, uh, discussion in, 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 in a discretionary format. Those are ministerial approvals, so tonight we will be talking about just tree number eighteen and tree number nineteen. I would like to invite Sally to speak more about this, she does not recommend approval of this heritage tree at the backyard of, for tree number eighteen, um, and for tree number nineteen.
All right.
Um, so the applicant has, um, asked to remove tree number eighteen with the, which is a healthy oak tree in the backyard, um, there was no development back there. Um, and, um, I think there's been a couple of these cases previously, um, where they wanna build a tennis court. But per the code, a tennis court is not a requirement, you don't have to have a tennis court. Um, so it's hard for me to recommend removal of a healthy tree for a tennis court. Um, the second request is for a TPZ of three times for tree number nineteen. Um, again, that's a pretty low TPZ zone, um, for some, something that had no construction in that location previously. Um, six times is the critical root zone, so three times is getting fairly close. Um, I know they received some feedback from the neighbors that was positive for the project, and also the applicant can speak on, they, they did, um. I think this is the best location that they could come up with for the tennis court, um, other locations for the tennis court, um, required more tree removals.
Right.
Um, so they have limited it down just to one tree removal and one TPZ request, which is good, however, it's, I still can't recommend.
Yeah. All right. All right, uh, and Rada, I'll ask you, uh, if, if the tennis court removed forward, uh, closer to the house, uh, for the space around tree nineteen, that would not give the setback from the house required, correct?
That would be correct, I don't think, however, they have another, it's surrounded by trees, I don't think they have explored the option of going too close, but they have to maintain, uh, eight-feet setback from the main house.
Right, right. Okay, any, any other questions? Nope. All right, now go ahead and hear it, then the applicant.
I did see the applicant online.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Are they, are you? Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, everybody's going full paper tonight. All right, good, alrighty, just like the old days. We used to get packing for me. Back when the eighties, when I used to get packets.
These all the same.
Yeah, yeah, here, for you, here.
Oh, no, no, no.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I can use this one, and I'll, I'll let me use the smaller one, this is easier. All right, you got it, all right. All right. Wow. I haven't seen these in a long time.
And. Um, I'm Lindsay Rothwell, I'm with, uh, Loretta Gargan Landscape and Divine. And so if we can start by looking at the second page, which is the first drawing, um, that is an existing site plan.
You're talking about her second page, yeah.
It's this. Lots of gray circles.
All right.
Yeah.
And so those lots of gray circles, there are, this is, site is heavily forested. Um, there are thirty-nine trees on the site itself, and then an additional thirteen on neighboring properties whose TPZ areas impact the site. So we're dealing with fifty-two trees in total, um, that are posing constraints and that we're working with protecting, and we're asking for the removal of one. Um, per the arborist's report, not Sally's, but an external arborist, and I believe that report is in your submission packet on the docket, but. We have these three trees, and you'll see them better on the next page, but tree eighteen is in a little cluster, um, there you go. Tree eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are crowded. Um, so you could turn to the next page, eighteen, eighteen is highlighted in red, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are crowded with competing canopies. Eighteen is the smallest in the group, and it has been deemed to be in fair condition, the other two are in good condition. So the arborists recommended that, well, he's, he stated that removing tree eighteen will provide more space for the other trees to grow and perform better. Um, so tree eighteen is there in red, that's what we're asking to have removed, and nineteen, we're asking for the three X TPZ for the court. Um. Both the homeowners and all the various architecture and landscape professionals on the project are working as good stewards of the lot and of the trees. We are following the guidance of part six of the Atherton Municipal Code, which allows for the removal of a heritage tree. To allow reasonable use or other enjoyment of the property when there's no demonstrated feasible alternative to removal. The homeowners have the support of the neighbors on all the adjacent properties, and they're not asking for any variances. Um, the following page, pretty much showing you the same thing, but it's the proposed landscape plan. Showing the, the proposed tennis court and ADU. Um. The tennis court and ADU would massively increase the family's enjoyment of their home. They love tennis, and this would provide them a huge amount of entertainment and recreation. The children are too young to ride their bikes across El Camino, they can't go play at Cooper Palmer Park, they don't drive. Um, also on this plan, which is L three point O, we're showing on four in the back on the rear property line, and two sort of bottom right of page, those are our six replacement trees, they're all oaks. And the four in the back would be thirty-six inch box size, and the two up front would be forty-eight inch box size, so they are going to, we're replacing oaks with oaks, and we're providing additional screening for neighbors on two sides. And then the final drawing, uh, is a couple of diagrams, and these are showing alternate locations for the ADU and court. Um, we, all of which impact more trees than our proposed design. The bottom diagram on the page was our initial request, which was for three tree removals. We've revised that and reduced down to now requesting one removal, and we did that by reducing the tennis court size as much as we could. And then as you, as you mentioned, Chairman Lane, moving the court forwards, um, towards the house and away from the rear property line, we can't move it anymore forward without hitting the building step back.
Right.
And then, it, I don't know if it's helpful to look, but the other packet is just photographs of the trees in question. Um, and all I have to add about that is, per this external arborist's report, he says there's extensive natural regeneration of native oaks in this area. The tree is not visible from the street, and it's screened from neighboring properties, and its removal will have negligible effect on shading, noise, wind effects, historic value, or scenic beauty. Okay?
What about tree twenty-two, what's the story on tree twenty-two?
Tree twenty-two and tree seventeen are dangerous, they're, they're not dead, but they're decayed and almost dead.
That twenty-two is the one you can see from the driveway, the top of the tree, oh, yeah.
It's lost a big sort of chunk of the.
I saw that one.
Sixteen, you can also see from the driveway, um, that amazingly had, one of those photos shows you, it had a garage and concrete slab built pretty much on it and around it, which we had now removed. Um, so actually, and we also removed a dilapidated kind of unsafe pool, so a lot of concrete's been taken out of the site.
All right, I saw that. All right, thank you, any questions?
No.
All right, thank you, anyone else here to speak on the item? And, uh, I'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate.
When, uh, when I was there.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like woods from the front of the property.
Yeah.
There's a lot of trees.
Yeah.
Um, and they're planning to replace, replace with, with six new oaks, is that correct? And. Well, back in the back, I, yeah, all right. So I have probably, uh, at least eight oaks that started as acorns on my property. And some of them, they, they range in size from large to huge. So they grow faster than you think. So, uh, the replacement oaks, I think, uh. Um, I, I kinda like to s. I, I don't want one tree to, to interfere with people's use of their property, particularly when they're agreeing to plant six. So I think I, I would be in favor of this, particularly since the, the, the two neighbors have no objections.
Yeah, so, as Sally is, makes, uh, recommendations based on the health of the tree, and that's, uh, that's, it's, it's a hard one for, for me, from the standpoint of, there's, there's, except for the fact that the, the board has been asked for, there's no reason for it, right? This is one that we don't, doesn't normally get approved around here. Uh, I often joke that if you have a choice between being a tree or a person, in Atherton, it's safer to be a tree.
Right. Maybe something we should change.
Yeah, uh, they're taking care of themselves these days, unfortunately. Uh, I don't know, I don't know on this, on this one, I, I, I do agree, this is the only plan that would work, be workable.
Um, I actually, I actually have a question, why, why is a tennis court so important? Is that just, uh?
I just, if, when you, if you open it back up again, I do have a comment on the screening.
All right, go ahead, I'll open it publicly.
Um, so I, typically, we don't allow replacement trees to be used as screening, and the ADU will be required to be screened. Um, so that's great that they wanna use the oaks to screen that, um, but typically, we don't count replacement trees, you know, when there's a site development. And they have to replant trees, they have to plant screening, and then they have to replant the trees, which is different than the screening.
Right.
I, I, I just wanna call that out, I mean, I'm happy with the replacement plan.
All right.
Um, but.
And you think oak trees, four oak trees along there won't be too much? I was thinking more scrappy.
They're gonna be columnar, which just means of the. Be columnar, which is means of the.
Oh, okay, there'd be that type.
There'll be special, special ones that are, don't spread.
Alright, good, that's, that, that makes more sense to me, okay.
So, by the way, never since, other than the motion I did earlier, which was exhausting, the other one is, is the. Number of, of pictures of trees in an application is definitely. One of the highest ever, is it, which, which of the pictures actually is the tree? In question, so to speak? I hate to fall.
The numbers are on them.
Eighteen and nineteen, that's bottom right one.
Oh, I'm sorry. First meeting.
You have to. Not the. The back, eighteen and nineteen.
That guy?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And so nineteen is just to the right of that and then you can't see twenty.
Right, I'm not saying this is a good idea, but I'm just saying this is possible, is that, can that be transpl- uh transplanted?
Unlikely, I don't know, Sally knows more about trees than I do, but it's a lot.
That it could be transplanted, um typically when we, we do that, um. Well, they are asking for a tree removal, so it would have to be a tree removal in case the tree doesn't make it. Um but.
Yeah, but, but that's a pretty big tree.
Possible, but it's not.
It's not, it's not a high problem.
Kind of the size that i- it might not make it.
Right.
Well, I guess, so, so there's the health question of the tree. And then there's the question of the applicant, is, is it worth it to try to, to, because trees are sacred around here, I mean. There may be fifty two or three on that property, but. The number of times we've, we've said, yeah, let's go ahead and do that, it's pretty low. I'm just trying to find you a solution. And so the solution is, is, I mean, Ariaga did it constantly at Stanford. You'd see this sized tree all over the place, he trimmed him down, he cleaned him up, took a lot of the weight off. Um and, and looking at the picture makes me feel like it's a younger tree that compared to a lot of the others that are there that. But I've never done it to an oak, so the question is, if that were one of the conditions, would the applicant consider it? Would Sally allow it and then would it be something that there's, there's a. Replacement issue if, if, if the tree doesn't make it. And I don't know how any of the planning commissioner feels about it, I'm just trying to come up with a solution rather than a flat out.
There's no real place.
I wouldn't necessarily recommend it because I'm not recommending the removal of the tree, but yes, that's something that. Would be considered and it would be better than just removing the tree, so yes.
The question that I have then on, on that, if that sounds like a good idea. If I saw a spot on the property that would be a location for it, which doesn't, it, it's not the kind of oak that you're replacing uh them with. And it's a very broad tree. So there's not a lot, and when I saw the property, there weren't like a lot of spots where I could just drop down a broad new oak tree uh uh in a location. Um that's the only thing, is that, 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 that's, it's the wrong tree for the lot for what, what the use would be.
So, so what if you, what if you just trimmed it back a ton? And sculpted it, so to speak, so that it, you, you know, you created much, maybe start kind of give it a new life, if you will, as a. New tree, I'm just, I'm just trying to come up.
Or in its place.
No, well, in its place, it still creates the issue with the court.
Right, exactly.
I'm saying, I'm trying to give you a lifeline here on where could it go, I'm, I'm, everyone else may hate the ideas, but I'm just trying to figure it out.
Right, I think, I mean, I would, I have to discuss with the homeowner and the other professionals, I, I think um on the project. I think because these three oaks have, their canopies are already crowded. They're not, none of them are fully balanced as we would want to see an oak anyway. So yes, actually, in that sense, it is trimmable, but how. Much could you trim because it's already missing a section on one side, um. And then I guess as a landscape designer, I sort of. I always look at a tree that's been, or a plant that's been in the ground for a while, even a shrub and think like, are you really gonna like having your roots pulled out of the ground? I, but I don't know, I don't know, maybe I'm saying the wrong thing, but I wouldn't want to sit here and say, yes, it'll absolutely survive and it was okay.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know which way, so this is one that I would normally not approve.
Right.
Uh that's because it was a uh, uh the tree takes the priority. Um so, uh be, before we go further, or did you want to say anything else before, alright, good. Now I'll go ahead and close the public comment section officially, so go ahead, Sam.
Chair Lane, it appears that Rhonda has her hand up.
Okay, Rhonda, you, you had to put your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, um I had, I wanted to bring the commission's attention to a public comment. We received for twenty Tuscaloosa, it's in front of your screen. Um and it reads in regards to the proposal for removal of a heritage tree at twenty Tuscaloosa. For the purpose of building a tennis court, I'm opposed to it, we are not allowed to remove. Healthy trees that we are concerned about falling on our houses. So why would the commission set this precedent for removing, removal of a tree to build a tennis court? It would appear that a tennis court in that location would also compromise the health of. Other heritage trees surrounding the proposed structure. Besides, we're losing too many trees as it is due to the weather pattern changes going on around here. This came in as a late correspondence yesterday in the morning, I believe. And typically, all these uh are shared and read out to the planning commission hearing and I will. Attach it to the packet after the meeting today, I just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, Rhonda, thank you for bringing that up, I did see that and read that, but I forgot to re- read it into the record, so thank you.
Somebody else has r- rose their hand.
Alright, someone else is there, who is that?
Hi, this, this is Matt and Vance of Thirty Seven Park Drive, we're behind um this property. Um sorry that we didn't raise our hand during public comment, but. We were under the impression that they were removing one oak tree. Um for like a backyard or something, so we didn't have a big issue with it. Seeing this big tennis court, we're, we, we would be concerned about the two oak trees that are closer to the fence. Um now that those could get damaged, we've seen trees die before when they're concreted over, so. Um we want to be a good neighbor to our new neighbors here, but we are concerned of the two oak trees that are. We call them the hugging oak trees, there's two oak trees that support each other and they're absolutely gorgeous from our backyard. So seeing a, seeing a concrete slab go over so close to them. I'm getting a little nervous, but I'll leave the arborist to decide that, so.
Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you for waiting too, and thank you for raising your hand. You know, that's the other thing I, on this proposal. Um. Uh. I, I, I understand the reason to move the big tree, but I, I really would not want to approve of the three X. Exception on the existing tree, so. Given that, that's the knockout for me more than the removal of the other tree.
Yeah.
Alright, because the three X, three X is not a good position for that, for that existing tree to be in. So the reason I would not approve is because of the three X request. And that, that, without that, then there can't be a, a, a court in that spot and then there's no reason to remove the other tree. So I mean, that's, that's where I kind of am on, okay.
And also, we do have um oak trees surrounding Holbrook Palmer Park tennis courts and just from an infrastructure point of view. It can cause cracking and then the litter is, is a lot, so I'm not even from the health of the tree and how many roots need to be cut. But just from an infrastructure conflict, three times is, is pretty close.
Right. Yep. Alright, so we're ready for a motion.
Actually, I, I, I haven't thought.
Alright, go ahead.
So Rh- Rhonda, can I ask in, in the future, in the staff reports? Could you speci- can you repeat? Or set out the uh factors in uh code eight dot ten dot zero four zero. Uh sub paragraph D.
Uh huh.
And those are the factors that the planning commission is supposed to consider. In a heritage tree removal. So in the future, can you just make sure that those are in the report, all six?
Yes, I will list all of them going forward, yes, for sure.
That, that's very helpful, you can always bring those up and that always helps.
Right, so uh. So my two cents are, um I, I am paying special attention to D six. Uh the necessity to remove the heritage trees to allow reasonable use. Or other enjoyment of the property, so. I, I think that is in, tilts in favor of the applicant. Um but the others, uh it doesn't quite outweigh the others. So that's just my way I look, looking at this, but I'll, I'll just emphasize again that, you know, it's really important, I think, for us, not that we're not doing it already. But I think it's intensely important for us to always have a view to the statutory requirements that we need to look at.
Right.
Because we have to be fair.
Right, right. Alright, so somebody ready for a motion? Go ahead, anybody? Need a motion?
I'm tired.
No, I'm sorry.
Alright, I'm not sure if I have any handy here, I'll be on that. Passing down the motion, uh so this is um. I moved that the planning commission find the request for a heritage tree removal for one coastal live oak tree, tree eighteen. And the TPC exception of up to three X. From a twenty five inch coastal live oak tree number nineteen. Contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report. And the planning commission denied the heritage tree removal permit and tree protections on exception TPZ permit to twenty Tuscaloosa Avenue.
I'll second.
Alright, moved and seconded, any comment? Ready to vote? Ready to vote, alright, uh let's hear a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Neransik?
Yes.
Commissioner Polito?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Lam?
Yes.
And Chair Lane?
Yes. Alright, with that then, thank you, and then uh can we go ahead and, and explain the, the uh. Uh. The uh ability of the applicant to uh. Appeal the decision. Somebody go through that with him? So. How much time do they have to, to appeal?
Um it's written in the agenda, all decisions can be appealed within ten days, I believe, and.
Alright, great, so that's, that would be your option to appeal to the, to the uh town council. Alright, thank you. Alright, and uh. Uh with that, then we'll go to the, any, any staff report?
Yes, there's a number of items that staff would like to report on. Um at one of the previous planning commission meetings, there was a speaker that um. That whose parent lived at. Right next to Carton Field and wanted um code enforcement at Lisa Marie. Um to contact them and I just wanted to confirm that Lisa Marie did contact that speaker. Um and then Chair Lane had discussed um wanting to discuss stormwater. Um at some point in, at the planning commission and uh Robert, I talked to Robert Avadia and um he's happy to talk to you about that.
Alright. Um to talk to the commission, right?
He, he can if you'd like.
Alright, I think that's appropriate, we got to figure out what our real strategy is because going forward, we can't have it look like it's looking right now. And, and he, he, when I talked to Robert, he's saying he's complying with what the, what the standard is for the town. Well, it's inadequate standard, so how do we go about changing the standards and making it this work?
And we, we can, what I can do is schedule a meeting with you, me and Robert Avadia, the public works director, and just to talk through.
Alright, I'll, I'll, okay, that, that, I, yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine, I mean, Robert and I know very, we're, we're each other very well because uh on the property that's brought, uh this to my attention was right in front of my property and I still have a ditch in front of my house right now, it's the only drainage method. Uh the, the other side of the street looks great and the, and there are spots on the, the, on the, on my street that ha- that are fine and then because I was. My driveway was filling up, I went out and, and dug a ditch on my own in front of the house so it would drain uh uh down the street like it always had, except down under my driveway. And then that ended up being the solution, which was not the intent, the intent was to not drown out my cars because it was, the wa- the water is filling up to the bottom of the cars. But when, then when I started going around town, I'm seeing this all over the place, every corner, every, every, and then the, the, the. Uh half the time when I'm driving out to Steve thing, there's like, where did the, why does this one house have this uh valley gutter and the next place next to it has the ditch and then on the other side of that, there's a. There's a four foot hole that's called the drainage area, it's just, and then, then there's a puddle in front of the other driveway, it's just, just. Not, it, it, you know, we, we can't be country stupid in the middle of, in the middle of all the, all the development we have around us, we've got to be more sophisticated than that. So. That's, where, where, where did this soapbox come from, alright? Yeah, alright, I can, I can talk to Robert, we can also, we have to work on that.
Okay, and a few other things, um Anthony Suber, the deputy. Deputy city manager, town clerk, would just like to Ryan, remind the planning commission to fill out the form seven hundred. Um and then there's a few projects that will be coming to the planning commission uh this year. So the AD ordinance will be coming back um at some point, um and then following the AD ordinance, there'll be some zoning code updates as part of the housing. Um element implementation. Um the Sacred Heart Use Permit Review, I think we're trying to schedule for June. And then for the Bear Gulch Water District, uh there's a few projects that are in the works. One is the water tank, which is a million dollar tank, which they're considering. Uh there's an outlet structure, an outfall structure, and then um I'm thinking soon that they'll also be bringing a CUP for temporary offices kind of down at the bottom.
Okay. Alright, good, any commission report, I gave mine because some of this on my topic, so, anything else?
Can you shift your soapbox down here?
Uh yeah, I'll store it for later.
Alright, I, I did, you sent me that uh. I guess you call it a primer to, to uh serving on the planning commission.
Yes.
So I read the whole thing, it was useful, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, I actually have a question. Um we've talked about this over, for about twenty years now, but Menlo Park just did a beautiful job updating its uh, its median area, who knows what happened now with all the trees in the wind, but. Um in, in their median on El Camino, and I know El Camino's run by Keltrans. We've talked about it for years in terms of something being consistent with through that town of Atherton. And it's always, it always kind of gets pushed out to public works or this or that, and I always forget and have my senior moment, so. Maybe, maybe now there's a way to have that as a future topic, may, it may not be appropriate for a planning commission, but somebody. It, it just looks awful. So.
It's a project that it's been, yeah, it's a project we want to, I want to do. It's embarrassing, to be honest, the medians in Atherton, and so, yeah, it's um. And my job is transitioning, I'm getting rid of half my job and that will be something I hope I can take on.
Ooh, you need vote? We take, all favors say aye. Can we make a motion?
You're very clear.
Alright, very good.
Mr. Lam, if you and I can maybe talk to Robert.
Sure, sure, sure.
Tomorrow's. The other thing, I, I just highlight this, Rhonda sent me this, this was an article that was in the newspaper that someone wrote uh an editorial about. Atherton Housing Crunch and how to solve it, so if you haven't read it, it's, it's worth, it's worth a read. Alright, okay, any, anything else? Alright, you know what, I've, I've been, I've been so happy, you know what, I've, I'm so happy to see everybody that I deliberately made this a two hour. Alright.
Younger and really good if we used to get out of there.
Yeah, I used to be like a fifty minute hero.
Yeah.
Alright, with that, then uh I need a, a motion to uh to adjourn.
I move to adjourn, second.
Uh moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm not in a pose, Rhonda, thank you for staying with us the whole time, uh and uh, yeah, there we go, alright, that was a closing one.
Thank you, good evening.
Rhonda, get well, get well.
Thank you.